Let's begin. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The councilman was called to order. I'll answer my own call.
Mayor Reidenhour?
Here.
Earl?
Here.
Knox?
Here.
Miller?
Here.
Neely?
Here.
Nuland?
Here.
Zimmerman?
Here. Sorry. I was not asleep.
That's what the previous meeting were read and approved. So Bruce. This is the office.
One million five hundred forty-four thousand seven hundred and thirty dollars and fifteen cents in all funds. Two hundred twenty-seven thousand five hundred thirty-seven dollars and twenty-seven cents in the general fund.
Any additions?
We did have additions today as payroll.
Bills were read. Resolution eighteen dash ten dash one was adopted on motion by. One second.
Knox? Yes. Nuland?
Yes.
Earl? Yes. Miller?
Yes.
Neely?
Yes.
Zimmerman? Yes.
Okay, it's time to go to guest section. Danielle?
I went ahead as before and put a copy together for everyone. Actually, what I did was I basically wrote a letter to council, but I'm gonna read it just so that you guys get the context for what I had written. And I would like to say first you all know I'm Danielle Reidenhour. And I'm basically trying to bring closure to my prior proposal. So I'm just gonna stick on point and read this if you don't mind. Dear Village of Waynesville Council, I'd like to follow up on the proposal presented to council at the August meeting regarding privacy or safety for the walk path. I presented factual information in a professional manner and hopes council would reciprocate the same. In addition, I requested some form of response from council, even if it meant nothing was able to be resolved. I was very aware of the council meeting in September, and I adopted not to participate as I understand things of this magnitude can take time. I'd assumed there would be discussion about the research that had been conducted over the prior month, and in fact, there was. After watching the meeting that took place in September, I'm sad to say I couldn't even bring myself to watch the video in its entirety, nor could I bring myself to replay any of it. My career has led me down a path which requires professionalism on a daily basis. It includes being professional in public even when I'm not per se on the clock because my actions go back on to my employer or lead people to think I cannot be trusted as a professional man as they thought I was. I'd like to point out that not everyone who was included in the meeting acted in an undesirable manner and approve on that lower myself to that level, speaking to those that did. I refuse to individualize the persons at fault. I'm only taking the time to express my feelings and hopes that council may elect to have an annual training possibly on professionalism and how to properly conduct a research project so other members of the community don't have to feel the shame or embarrassment placed on me for my own village council. In conclusion, I've come to the understanding that the village has opted to take no action on the original request, and I'm expecting no further fallout to that issue. So I am available if anybody has any questions. I don't want this to come that I'm attacking anyone, but I kind of requested closure on that, and I didn't receive it. I tried to give ample time, which is why you can see the letter was actually dated today. So I was just hoping that moving further, that other citizens that came in with issues and possible solutions would get some sort of responses requested or anything. And as you saw in there, the research that was to be done, I was expecting something a little bit more in-depth. I know how I have to do things at work, so I was kind of expecting that. So I just hope that maybe council can take this as a learning experience in moving forward. And I do apologize today. I won't be able to stay for the whole meeting like we were last time, but children with dinner tonight, and if those of you that know, I've had a rough day today, so I need to get home and get some stuff taken care of. So if there is nothing else from me, I am gonna go ahead and take the children and head back home. Nothing else? Okay. Thank you guys for your time. If you did take on doing stuff?
Appreciate it.
Thanks. Thank you, Danielle. Okay, thank you.
Okay, next is Craig Kinnear.
Yes, my name's Craig Kinnear again, and I'm with the Public Entities Pool of Ohio. We handle, well, I guess my company is Burnham Flower Insurance Group, and we handle over 1,500 public entities, the insurance, property and liability insurance needs for over 1,500 public entities here in the state of Ohio. I know I had approached Fred and Jill last year, and we had started beginning the processes of a quote, and I feel like a little miscommunication, maybe wasn't able to get here to the board meeting, and so I wanted to make sure I came this year and presented to the council. And so that's why I'm here tonight, to kind of go over some of these items, if you don't mind. This is kind of what I put together for you. So I understand that you're currently with Don Ritchie and Block Insurance as well as Mr. Kessler, and they have you under three different policies. And with the public entities pool, so the origination behind the pool was back in the mid-1980s. Public entities like yourselves weren't able to maintain or be insured with traditional insurance companies because insurance rates were fluctuating, what I was told, 400% from one year to another. And so legislation was created which allowed public entities like yourselves to pool their risk. And so PEP and OTARMA, the two programs that I represent, were created and have since flourished over 1,500 members here in the state of Ohio. So as you can see, it started back in 1987, and currently, the PEP program, which ensures cities and villages, fire districts, health districts here in the state, has over 500 public entities. Last year, your association, the Ohio Municipal League, Municipal League, I'm sorry, actually decided to endorse our policy, our program. They felt, they looked at our program, they looked at some of our competitors, and they felt like ours was the best for a lot of public entities here in the state. And so that is something to be aware of. Moving right along, based on what I believe was your 2016 premium of roughly $15,000 at $1 million limits, ours, as you can see, saves just over $3,000. And so that's first off. I know cost is important. And so hopefully, if we can save $3,000 for the village a year, you can use something else on that money, you know, whether it be going toward the park or something else to help your residents. And so moving on, I know there's coverage section there on that first page, talks about the two and three million dollar options, the no aggregates, but on the upcoming pages, I actually have a coverage comparison. I know insurance isn't always looked at thoroughly every year, and that's at no one's fault either, and you have other business to attend to, but that will be something that we get into in the upcoming pages. As far as stability there on the bottom of the first page, we have a specialized loss control team. And so that is a team that will come out your first year of membership, and then every three years afterward, they'll provide recommendations on ways to prevent lawsuits in the future. And that is included in your cost. I don't know if Erie or Scottsdale is providing that currently, but that's a value-added benefit that I don't think you're currently offered. So that is something to consider. Burnham Flower, like I said, we specialize in public entities. We currently insure all the townships here in Auglares County. We insure the fair, the egg society. We insure Village New Breaman. We insure the Health Department, things of that nature. In our program, we do have a 99% retention rate. So members that are with us, they're having claims, they're happy with how their claims are being handled. They're happy with their cost. The pooling mechanism, the risk-sharing agreement that I mentioned at the beginning allows for consistency in pricing. Unless you have significant claims under the same line of insurance, your rates are gonna be the same. And so this is not like a one-time fee to get you in the door, and then we're gonna up your prices. This is something that you can rely on and budget for in upcoming years. And so I guess that more or less is the first page. If you wanna turn to the second page, you can kind of move forward. It talks, it's that OML endorsement. So again, they looked at our program, and they looked at some of our competitors. And as you can see in the bottom of the second paragraph, they are saying that PEP is the best risk management sharing choice for the Ohio Municipal League. I feel like that says a lot. Again, that's your association, and you know, they're looking at what's best for their members, which is villages like the Village of Waynesville. And so that is something, feel free to reach out to your association if you have any questions on us. If you don't, feel free to move on to page three. This starts the beginning of the coverage comparison. And again, this is going off the 2016 policies that you had. That was the information that Jill was able to get gathered for me, so that's kind of what I'm going off of. I just want you to be aware. And just disclaimer more or less is there is blanks under your current policy. That is more or less, that doesn't mean there's no coverage, it's just I couldn't find it in what I was given. So feel free to go through your own policy and look at some of those coverages. Points in the yellow are advantages of one program over the other. Points in the blue are what I'm specifically gonna touch on, or else you could be here for, you know, an hour or two. So each occurrence, they're at the top of page three. That is any one lawsuit that the village may have. Right now, you have an Erie policy. I believe that's with Kessler Insurance, and that has a November 24 expiration date, so it renews on November 24 each year. Right now, if the village was in a lawsuit, you would have $1 million. And then you would have a second, if you would have a second lawsuit, it'd be an additional million, and then you'd be cut off in that year. So you have two $1 million claims, is what I'm getting at. With PEP, you have a $2 million for the first lawsuit, and then a $2 million for the second, $2 million for the third. We do not have an aggregate, and therefore, we'll not cut you off in a given year. If you happen to have three different, you know, lawsuits, you're gonna get $2 million, up to $2 million per, and you know, we'll not cut you off. So that is, that is a big advantage, and that's an advantage of a pooling mechanism as opposed to a traditional insurance company. Moving right along, you have your cyber liability. Cyber is becoming a bigger and bigger thing. You know, everything is on the computers nowadays, and so if you have extremely identifiable information on there of your residents, and that is exposed, some hacker hacks in, you know, and then they sue the town, or the village, I'm sorry, I keep saying the township, I don't know why. But if they sue the village, you know, that is something, you can have up to a $2 million lawsuit on your hands. Moving right along, public officials, that is the decisions that you as a board make. And so again, you're upping that up to the $2 million as opposed to your current one. And if you look at aggregate under that public officials, you have an aggregate of $1 million under your current policy. So you can have one claim there in a given year, and then you're done. With us, you're getting two for the first, two million for the second, so on and so forth. And so there's a big advantage there. And I believe, so that for, for that additional coverage, for you with PEP to go from $2 million to $3 million, it's a $1,475 option. So it gives you a value for that additional million that we're providing for you while we're also saving $3,000. And so just to make sure that you're aware of that. Back wages, again, up to the $2 million. We have your retro date. So any public officials' claim that's happened in the previous years, if you sign over with us, PEP will be responsible for. We will provide your defense and legal fees, and we will provide up to $2 million, $2 million as opposed to your current one. That is something to be aware of. Have your law enforcement operations on here, up to the $2 million, and no aggregates again. So there's a lot of coverage advantage here. Any questions on page three? I know there's a lot on here. I guess I should probably preface my whole presentation with, if you have any questions at all while I'm kind of presenting, feel free to stop me as I'm going.
Well, with what we've got going on tonight, you have enough information here that you and the finance committee can review this and make a determination whether you want to go further, you know? Because what we would do, if you and the finance committee feels you want to investigate it further, then you would do that as a committee and then bring it back to council as a whole, because there's a lot of the stuff that most of council will not have the information that we've had over the years on, by the base, what we need.
Can we go over it?
You know, I appreciate everything here, but like I say, I've got a lot to get through here this evening, and this is the representation of what we can compare, our costs, what we're doing now. I'd like to stop this right here and then turn it over to the finance committee and this officer to review, and then if you need more information from this gentleman, then go that process.
Bring him back.
Right. Right.
Definitely. More is going, so yeah. So yeah, I mean, I guess if you don't mind, if we could flip to the last page, it's a summation of everything then, if we're trying to save time. And I apologize if you're busy and you have other business to attend to. I appreciate you hearing me out thus far, please. It kind of, you know, there's a couple of big points. Over $3,000 savings right up front. An additional $1 million per occurrence and no aggregates, that is huge. A million, over a million dollars worth of additional property that we've provided, and we were able to maintain that relationship with your local agent. I was able to talk to Mr. Ritchie last week, and he said if the village council decided to switch over to PEP, he could still be your local agent. And so more or less, I'm a, I'm a carrier, I'm a Geico progressive-type guy, company man, and we work with local agents throughout the state. We have, like I said, all the townships here, and I know Wayne Township's one of our members with the OTARMA program. It's the endorsed program by their association as well. And if they've had claims, they deal with the same claims provider, servicer as well. So they specialize in public entities. They're not dealing with homeowners insurance or commercial insurance, exclusively public entities here in Ohio. So again, sorry to take so much of your time. I will provide these to council as well, if you don't mind. This is the more formal extended version of what I gave you. Talks about our service providers, talks about the endorsement. It's got my contact information in there. And if any of you have any questions at all, please don't hesitate to reach out. I hope they'll help you. So my copy is now your copy. Sorry.
Thank you.
All right. All right, well, thank you for hearing me out. If there's no other questions, I'll let you get to your business. Okay. Appreciate it.
Thank you for coming.
Definitely. Thank you for having me. Jill, I'll probably call for the email tomorrow.
Okay. Yep.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Actually, Jill.
Thank you.
Happy to be here.
Good morning, Greg.
Thanks. Take care. Yep.
Let's go to the many reports.
So I just have an ordinance to transfer some money in the general fund, just one. One amount in the general fund, just all I have.
I'll make a motion, we just spend a rule of three deems and declare an emergency.
Miller?
Yes.
Nuland?
Yes.
Earl?
Yes.
Knox?
Yes.
Neely?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance eighteen dash ten dash one, an ordinance to amend appropriations, eighteen dash one dash one.
Accepting.
Miller?
Yes.
Nuland?
Yes.
Earl?
Yes.
Knox?
Yes.
Neely?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other committee reports? Police report.
On September 26th, Hunter successfully re-certified as police K-9. This is an annual certification he must achieve through the state of Ohio and the National Association of Police K-9 Hamblers Association in order to continue working as a police dog. I was very pleased with his work, which just reaffirms why we, why it's important that we train regular police, and he did really well that day. State issue one, I would like to take a moment and speak against state issue one, set to be voted on in just a couple of weeks. I would urge voters to vote no on state issue one, which has been proposed to essentially decriminalize illegal drugs. Possession of cocaine, methamphetamines, heroin, and most, and the most deadly of all, fentanyl would no longer be felonies up to a certain level. What's most scary is someone who could possess up to 19 grams of fentanyl, which is enough of the drug to kill 10,000 people, the resulting charge would equal a misdemeanor where only local jail time would be served. Most striking issue for me is that if issue one passes, our local resources, which are already being taxed because of the drug problems, are going to be pressed even more. Criminal being released from incarceration and drug sentences lessened means crime will undoubtedly increase, which is why I believe we need to vote no on issue one. One of the other things too is no longer putting people in prison for some of the main drug issues as well as some of the more serious crimes, and instead shifting that burden onto the county jails, which are already at capacity. I know Auglares County Jail is over 100% capacity in what the state recommends for housing criminals. Allen County's the same, Logan County's the same. So if we decriminalize the drugs to the point where everything's a misdemeanor, judges will have no choice but to sentence them to local county time. And once you reach a certain percentage over 100%, the county's required to ship their inmates to other jails across the state that have room, which costs more tax dollars and takes officers off the street because they're doing transports to other facilities, that type of thing. So issue one is, it's, you know, around here, it's been pretty apparent that law enforcement judges, prosecutors, even defense attorneys in many cases are speaking out against issue one. So I would just encourage you, if you're not familiar, to do some research, but it's not gonna be a good thing for law enforcement and for the public in general. So just keep that in mind as we come up to the voting season. I'll be off my soapbox on politics now. Walking path. Walking path has seen a tremendous amount of use since it's been asphalted and even before that. Since that time, I've addressed a couple of motorized vehicles on the path, including a four-wheeler one night when I was out for a walk. So I would encourage council to pass the pending legislation as quickly as possible. I believe we've got that set for second reading tonight, so if you guys have had a chance to review that and heard any, any information back on that, I would encourage sooner rather than later, because we are getting in the time period where unfortunately, snow's gonna start flying, and we're gonna have four, not only four-wheelers, but snowmobiles and that type of thing. So if we can pass legislation, that would be.
I do believe the reports of that going on has slowed way down compared to initially.
It has, it has slowed down. Like I said, here just a couple of weeks ago, I was out with my family on the path, and I heard a four-wheeler coming, and he was coming right down the path, and I stopped him, and I didn't have any identification on me, but I told him who I was, and he recognized me once I told him. And he had just heard there was a neat path up there that he should check out, and so he was a younger kid and didn't know any better, but he, I since stopped him a couple days later on a traffic stop, and he said, "Man, I just can't get away from you," you know? But, but he assured me that he would let all of his buddies know that the path was not designed for any type of motorized vehicle. So, so I think, you know, word will get out pretty quick.
I've gotten a lot less reports of it happening, so.
Yeah.
I think the word is getting out that there may be consequences.
Sure.
So.
Yeah, absolutely. So I would just, I would encourage council to go ahead and pass that. I know we're not quite through Halloween yet, but I wanna bring this about to you guys so we can go public with this as well. The annual Christmas lights competition will be going out, that notification will be going out very soon on social media. I also have flyers printed that we can post at our normal locations. We will be seeking three volunteers who reside outside the village and have not been judges in the past to be judges this year, but that will be taking place at a later date. So I just want to make you aware in case anybody asks, are we doing the Christmas lights competition? Yeah, we are, we're just, I wanted to wait till we got through Halloween, because, you know, sometimes we hear people get upset that we're skipping ahead too fast, and just looking forward, and we'll throw that to you. And lastly, the, I reviewed the proposed zoning regulations that I believe you may have received a copy of tonight. I think Jill had one copy. It was a pretty substantial amount of paperwork. I did review that, and I can say that it was pretty dry, to say the least. However, I wanted to make sure I went through it to see if there was anything that specifically needed addressed, and I did find some areas that I think council needs to consider. I didn't see anything in there regarding regulations for fencing, mowing of properties, not differentiating between, or differentiating whatever council decides between your residential, commercial, and industrial properties. I know that was, in talking with some of you individually, that was a concern, that there were different standards based on the way the zoning was, and, and there's been quite the outcry to try to make that a consistent thing across the board. So we do have an ordinance for grass height on residential properties, but not for commercial and industrial. So, so if that can be addressed in the zoning, I think that would be, that would clean up a lot of, a lot of the language there. I would also encourage council to consider zoning issues for new and used car lots and possibly the need for a special use permit, which would help with, I know, one in particular issue that we have in the village, but in the future, sometimes we see people have three or four vehicles in their front yard for sale. By state standards, I believe you can have a maximum of two. I would encourage the village to look at something like that as well, because you, sometimes the state is reluctant to go into municipalities in force based on not knowing the local rules and that type of thing. So, so I would encourage the village to have some zoning issues with regards to new and used car lots, how they're marked, how their, the property lines are separated, that type of thing. The zoning regulations also didn't address the property maintenance committee and their responsibilities, so I think that the zoning can possibly address that as well. That might be helpful. And then, as we've had in the past, and I think this is currently on hold, but parking in the tree lawn, if that's something council still has desired to look at, and we'd have to get legal advice on whether or not that would still need to be an ordinance, or if that could be a zoning issue. Parking in the tree lawn, and then I've spoken with some people who had concerns about people parking just in grass in general in their front yards, that type of thing. So if that's, the zoning issues that you feel need to be addressed, then those are, those are areas I just wanted to bring to your attention that I didn't see in those in the proposed zoning regulations. So I would encourage you to take the four, or five, or six days to read through all of that and see if you can think of anything else or add to it, but I just wanted to bring that to your attention as to what I saw.
Well, the process would be, you would, like we did, make notation of areas of concern. Then that whole thing would go to the zoning board of appeals for their review and to add or take away whatever is there, and then it would come back at their recommendation to the council for approval.
With public hearings along with what?
I think you've turned it over to the attorney's part of the final draft.
Yes.
After all the adjustments.
Yep.
Because we need their proficient legal language.
Is that three public hearings, Dave?
I think you've got, I don't think it's three. I'd have to double-check, but I don't think it's three.
Okay.
I think it's just one at the committee stage and one once against the council.
Excellent.
Does it address the abandoned structures, anything about that in there?
Wasn't specifically looking for that, so you may wanna check that out.
I wasn't specifically looking for that, so you may want to check that out and look. I didn't specifically look for that.
And if you all want hard copy, I can do that. I emailed all of you, but if you'd rather me make copies, I can.
Well, the thing is, with, with doing zoning changes and so on and so forth, whether you do one or you do twenty, you still have to have all the public meetings and everything, and if we can group this.
Yeah, that's, that's.
That's kind of how we want to go with it.
That's all I have.
Thanks, sir.
Just a couple of things real quick. We are probably going to change our utility software. Currently, we have CMI, it's kind of getting dated, they're made some adjustments, and then it's kind of getting outdated the way it's been handled. And so, we, there will have to be some changes one way or the other. A couple of other communities were looking at changing to, I think it's called MuniLink. And so, our utility clerk went to a seminar, came back impressed and liked it, recommended it. So, then I had a meeting with the supplier, the vendor, along with the fiscal officer, and they did a presentation for us here at the office. I think we felt very good about what the capabilities were, and then the, where with the previous software, anytime there was any changes or adjustments, or a lot of times technical support came with additional cost. One of the things that this offers is offers those items without a cost. Plus, at the end of the year, when you break it down in the cost, it's actually a little cheaper. One of the new technology changes in it is where our current company uses server backups, and they're kind of getting overloaded. I guess Jill may be able to speak to it, I wasn't aware of it, but I guess it's getting overloaded, and they've already notified us that there's going to be a change, and I didn't know if it was a year or six months. But, when they make that change to upgrade their server, that's going to come in a cost. This system does it in the cloud, which is the new way that they're doing the backup is in the cloud, not so much a physical place. Having said all that, I think we'd make, we'll make that change, but we sent a contract to our attorneys, and they came back with about five to ten questions that, based on their recommendations that we ought to address. And so, my point is, is when, we will sit down with the attorneys and their representatives and see if we can come to a satisfactory conclusion to those concerns, and then if so, we are hoping to have this online by maybe the first of the year. But, just so you know, that if there is some hard line questions in there that the attorneys strongly recommend against, we won't do it. But, if not, we will be switching our server probably the first of the year, I mean, our software for the utilities. One of the perks that this has, there's, there's many aspects of it, it's more user-friendly.